Good evening. And welcome to the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of July 10, 2017. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Lanson? Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Nichols?
Yes.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Chair Newman?
Here. This is our public comments period. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on issues that are within the commission's purview and not on the agenda. Each speaker is allotted five minutes and must fill out one of these beige speaker cards. We have one public speaker tonight, Mr. Nick Kidway. Mr. Kidway, good evening.
I begin in the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park since 1979 and director concerned city in Thousand Oaks. I'm already seeing a new face that I saw the name already in some of the reports. So congratulations, even though I would warn you, don't try to fill Mr. Prescott's shoes. That is an impossible thing to do. But other than that, good luck to you. We do need more boots on the ground or Hawaiian shirts. I would like the planning commission to read a story in the LA Times. I have a few planning commissioners' names, so I already sent the link. It was very good that Los Angeles, of all places, is crafting an ordinance to mitigate people who may be living close to a freeway or oil refinery, not the best of circumstances to come up with a buffer zone, et cetera. We already do a lot of that in our city, but we can always improve. I live a mile from the 101, and over 30 years, the noise has increased tremendously. It's still not a real problem because I'm almost a mile away in Newberry Park by Amgen, but concerned about the pollution because that's a silent killer. I was at a party, I guess, and met a former resident who's a cardiologist in Maryland, and I was disappointed. Some people think I criticize the city a lot, maybe I should criticize the state. But when I hear from somebody, a non-resident, I don't like it. And he was complaining that the city, he lived here in the 80s, and there's too much trash everywhere and too many potholes. And why is it that the state has gone evil? And the one word I answered that I came up with was Proposition 13, that reduced the taxes so much and changed the thing, and we still have not recovered from it, even though I love it. I cannot pay the high taxes. So if TO TV can show the overhead, this is Rancho Road on ramp here in Thousand Oaks, That is the other side. And believe it or not, that's the city's transportation center. And maybe there's an attempt to have a drought tolerant thing, but it doesn't look pretty. And I was surprised. I know the city had a sign in this direction that the city was picking up trash, which is like vendors. I have a sign off Hampshire Road. It's basically for graffiti removal, not for trash. But I was surprised when I looked at the checks that the city writes, one of these days, that the city pays Caltrans to pick up the trash. And it's just a pretty decent sum. So maybe we are not paying enough, or this needs to be installed. I mean, in our own state, San Diego, from Orange County to San Diego, you won't find any off-ramp that looks ugly. And I was trying to get to show a video because, in fact, it's been 20 years since the city has not got a video of the projects which I've been saying that you should be doing. And Westlake Village had took videos, not professional quality, but a picture tells, I showed you the picture, video is 10 times better than stills. And I have shown videos of projects or things like that to city council and planning commission, but I was told in writing that none are available. So we are regressing. I mean, I feel bad that I'm the only one speaking over here. There should, there used to be at least four or five people. It's not good, I mean, for people to complain or something, but there are people would come with suggestions and ideas. And so some of these decisions are being made in the basement or in the city manager's office without input, or maybe the city, some city council people are involved. But, you know, this country is great, and the city is great. We have to live up to what we can offer. My time is up. Thank you for letting me speak. Good luck. Enjoy the summer.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway, for your comments. We move now to written comments, announcements, and continuances, and introduce this evening, Mr. Peter Gilli. Welcome as the new representative of the Community Development Department. Welcome.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. For this meeting, we don't have any additional written comments, announcements, or continuances.
Thank you, Mr. Gilli. With that, then, we'll move to case 6A. Will the clerk please read that case?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case LD 2017-70069. Applicant: Los Robles Office Partners LLC. Request: To divide existing site into seven parcels, six for buildings for condominium purposes, and the seventh parcel for a community-owned parcel under a property owners association. Location: 301 to 343 Southmore Park Road.
And presenting the case for the staff this evening is another new face, but now a senior planner with the city, Ms. Carrie Finley. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Newman, members of the commission. I'm Carrie Finley, and I'm the project planner for this item. As Ms. Fodriel stated, the project involves LD 2017-70069, which is a request for a commercial land division for condominium purposes located at 301 through 343 Southmore Park Road. This slide shows a project site which includes the 5.29 acre existing parcel. The property is bounded to the south by Southmore Park Road. Let's see here. And to the north, where Rolling Oats Drive ties in, to the south, Los Padres Drive, the Conejo Players Theater, and then the Los Robles Screens Golf Course. The project site is designated commercial in the general plan in Zone C3, which is community shopping center. There are no general plan amendments or zoning changes requested with this, with this application. The original six medical professional office buildings were approved in 1974, and they still exist on-site and will remain. This request includes no new development, no changes in use or alterations to the existing structures, no additional parking or renovations to parking or landscaping are being proposed. The slide shows the proposed parcel boundaries. The request is to subdivide the existing professional office parcel, which is currently one around the whole entire existing parcel, into seven parcels. There will be six, one for each building. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. And you can see that they follow the, each parcel follows the configuration of the building footprint. The seventh parcel is all the remaining area in white that will be commonly owned and managed by a property owner's association. This parcel contains all the existing parking and landscaping, and then the existing trash Next, I have a series of photos to provide some context for the project site. For those of you who may not be familiar with the site or haven't, haven't had a chance to go by there, as you see, there are many mature oaks and other mature trees on the property and along the perimeter. And this request does not include pruning or removal of any of the trees. This slide here shows the main entrance from Moore Park Road looking north in the middle of the site towards parcel five. This view is facing parcel two on the proposed map, and there are two large oak trees here in this elevated planter. And here's a view from the center drive aisle facing southwest towards parcel one. And if you spin around 180 degrees, this one view is facing parcel four from the center aisle drive. And finally, the slide shows the view facing west between parcels three and five, and then in the background, there's parcel four in the distance. Moving on now to the regulations that pertain to this. The municipal code designates the planning commission as the authority for approval of land divisions of commercial and industrial zoned property. Regulations typically applied to subdivisions include development standards in the municipal code and then design and landscaping guidelines. These standards pertain to most new development or construction, but because the property is already developed and no new construction is being proposed, most of these standards do not apply to this land division. However, one standard in the municipal code that does apply is the minimum parcel size of 20,000 square feet. From this table, you can see that all of the parcels except the common parcel do not meet the minimum 20,000 square feet. The municipal code allows for deviations from the standard with approval of the discretionary permit, such as this land division request. Staff found that the planning commission has, in fact, approved several commercial and industrial subdivisions with substandard-sized parcels in the past. So this is not an uncommon request in conjunction with commercial and industrial subdivisions. For example, in 2015, the planning commission approved the Conejo Merchant Industrial Condominium Project on Conejo Center Drive that contains substandard-sized parcels ranging from 6,300 to 16,000 square feet, which are all under the minimum 20,000. So staff supports this deviation from the minimum parcel size for several reasons. First, due to the configuration based on, that each parcel is based on the building footprint, the land division would not result in an intensification of development because there's no room for expansion of the buildings beyond the parcel lines. And if there were any requests to build them higher, there'd be no room for additional parking on the site. Another reason is that the seventh parcel, which is the commonly owned parcel, is, will be managed by a property owners association, and that will ensure consistently maintained common amenities. As you could see, the landscaping is a very nice feature of this property. And there will be reciprocal agreements for access, parking, and landscaping. Because these are not standalone parcels, meaning that each individual building and the landscaping associated parking and everything is all located on one parcel, because they don't stand alone, there will be little or no opportunity for intensification of the development. And the final reason is the reduced parcel sizes are not in conflict with the general So finally, the project's determined to be exempt from CEQA because there's no potential to cause a significant impact on the environment. For the record, staff received several inquiries from neighbors prior to the hearing regarding just the nature of the project. There was confusion with the term condominium, which raised concern that the project included a development of residential condominiums. Since this is not a residential development and it's not the nature of the request, I was able to address the concerns with most, with the callers and the email correspondence that was received prior to the hearing. One question was also raised prior to the hearing concerning easements and condition number 17. To clarify, condition number 17 means that the final map that will be recorded will make clear that there will be only one access easement from Moore Park Road and no additional easements will be allowed. And it just clarifies and makes sure that's understood. So therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission approve the land division before you, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Finley, for that report. And Commissioner Nichols, I believe, has some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Finley, for the presentation. Great job, first time with us. Thank you for joining us. I do have a few questions. The first one, if you could, I'm more familiar with the residential condo developments that we have in town and familiar with how those are managed. As you mentioned, there's, you know, individual units are owned by private parties, and then there are common areas. Is there any distinction, either by the subdivision map act or some other document, that distinguishes between a office type of condominium and a residential condominium? Or are they virtually the same in concept?
My understanding is that in concept, it's the same thing. It allows for separate ownership of the airspace, if you will, and that whether it's just a different type of use that is permitted in that structure.
Okay, so it'd be similar, similar issues that we might face regardless of the setting, then?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as a follow-up to that, in the report, you mentioned that the parcels are basically following the building footprints. But as I look at the map, it seems like there's quite a different arrangement for the footprints, and it seems like the parcels are really a little bit larger than that. Are the parcels actually following maybe an eve line, or is it the footprint?
Yes, it's the eve line. You're correct.
It is?
Yeah.
And then, I guess, maybe a little follow-up to that, then. If there's a three or five-foot difference between the eve line and the wall of the structure, again, going back to the residential concept, usually the association maintains the exterior of all buildings and all landscaping. But if you've got a three-foot buffer between the common lot and the building, who's maintaining the buildings and who's maintaining that landscaping within that little buffer strip there?
I think I'm gonna, might defer to the applicant's surveyor because they're gonna be developing their, or working with a specialist to develop the CCNRs, and that, I believe, will govern that. I assume they will all be maintained by the property owners association like a regular condominium project, but I would try to confirm that with the applicant's representative.
Okay, all right. We'll give them a shot to respond to that as well. Are there any triggers that the city has in place for these types of conversions that if someone wants to convert from a standard development to a condominium development, that certain things have to take place? Or is it basically just a paper process? In other words, there's no physical changes that need to take place? Is it just documents?
It's, well, in this case, it's documents. It's the map, and it's the drawing of the map, and then working out the CCNRs for the property owner and filing it with all the conditions, meeting all the conditions of approval. Physical changes are not being proposed in this particular instance.
Okay. I noticed that because there's no proposal for changing any infrastructure, no separate infrastructure type of system, whether it be water, sewer. So all that just stays exactly as it is, then?
I'm just gonna look for confirmation, but I think there would be separate metering for the, for the, like, the wastewater services and that type of thing. But otherwise, yes.
All right. Well, while our resident expert's coming down, I'm sure he's formulating an answer for us, so welcome, Mr. Bussel.
Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, the wastewater, typically each parcel would have its own wastewater lateral. But in the case of existing parcels like this, recently, probably four or five years ago, we amended our municipal code to deal with these. Because existing buildings like this, it's very hard to go back and install brand-new laterals back to the streets. So we included in our municipal code a way that these buildings could use their existing laterals and not have to construct new laterals. And that's what this is going to follow. So the property owners association will be maintaining those individual laterals.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. Thank you, sir. And then, another question I had, which really goes more to the map itself. I noticed there's a comment, I guess it would be on the western portion of the map, where it says there's an easement to parcel two. But I don't, I guess it's probably when the larger area was subdivided, and I don't know where parcel two, because this is referring to parcel A that is now being subdivided into parcel one through seven. So is that correct? Was there a parcel two, or is that maybe a parcel B? Or what is the reference there?
That was from a prior map.
Okay.
Where these, I don't know if you can see on here, but to the east and west, there are parcels, there are easement parcels that go to the parking areas. And those are referenced on the previous map.
Okay. So that's, that's historical reference, not for this current map, then?
This map does not encompass those. They're just outside of it, and they're showing that that exists.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you very much. That's all for now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, are there any other questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Pletcher?
It's amazing, all we have to do is hit a button. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Finley. It's a bit of a historical question, so I don't know, I don't know quite how we're gonna get there, but it says in our packet on page four of the staff report, speaking about the C3 zone and the proposed parcel sizes, says very briefly that C3 zone are required to have a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet unless otherwise stated in the development permit. My question's really pretty simple. I'm just trying to get context at how we arrived at the parcel size, minimum parcel size of being 20,000 square feet.
That's a requirement that's in the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, and it's, my understanding, because it's been deviated from, not uncommonly, that, that it's based on, I mean, for example, this is already developed, and they can request the land division, but there's a provision in there that says unless it's otherwise stated in the code and, or in the permit, and this is the permit that would allow you to do that. So there's room for flexibility and discretion in enforcing that 20,000 square feet minimum.
Okay, I think that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner questions of staff? I have just one brief clarification. Thank you for addressing the question about easements. Just to clarify, are you suggesting any change to the wording of condition 17? Or was the statement that there is one easement for the public driveway, was that an information-only
I'm gonna let Mr. Bussel respond to that, because that's from Public Works.
Yeah, we're not proposing to change that condition. What the condition is saying is on the, on when the map is recorded, on the owner's statement, they say that they will only allow, there will only be one entrance off of Moore Park Road. And the way that condition ends is that that one entrance will be free of any other easements that are over it. So they will give up any, any rights to any other, any other driveway entrances off of Moore Park Road.
So the language as is is okay?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Bussel. Not seeing any other questions of commissioners, we will go to our applicant. Speaking for the applicant this evening is Mr. Gerald Havel, or Havel, apologies for butchering your name. You and your representatives will have 15 minutes to speak, and after, staff will speak again, and then you'll have an additional five-minute rebuttal period, if you wish. We ask for the record that you state your name and your city of residence. Good evening.
Good evening. Chair Burtson Newman, members of the city council, city planning commission, and staff. My name is Jerry Havel. I'm a licensed land surveyor with Havel &amp; Polarsky Engineering, and I'm the one that was responsible for the creation of the tentative map that's in front of you. I am representing the applicant tonight. She was unable to make it at the last minute. I'd like to thank staff for the very capable help that she gave me. She's a new face to you, but not to us. She's been around for a while. The request does not involve any new development or changes in the use. The staff report was quite clear on us, but I believe it really needs another little punch in there to make sure that it's very clear. The land division does allow the existing buildings to be converted to condominium. There is no expansion on the use or increase in any floor area. Nothing changes, except that people can own their own unit. I'm requesting the planning commission approve LD 2017-70069, and I'll attempt to answer questions that the commission may have.
Commissioner Lanson?
Good evening, Mr. Havel. Thank you for being here and answering our questions. I just have a brief question. And looking at the map, most of the buildings, when they're separated, will constitute their own separate piece of land. But I notice in Lot Four, two buildings are actually going to be deemed one property. Why is that? Why are you not seeking it separately?
They're joined by a, I don't know what it's called, I'd call it a port de chaire, but there's a, there's a connection between the two buildings, so they are considered one building.
And are they metered as one building?
Yes.
Okay. And with regard to the POA that's gonna be created, is the current owner going to maintain ownership of any of these buildings after this process is completed?
They'll be, the current owner will maintain ownership as, until they're sold, which may be sometime, because they'll, most of the sales are gonna be to the current users. So there may be, the current owner may have a continued ownership in that for a period of time.
And each building is currently used by somebody almost exclusively in terms of their business?
No, I understand that the, the buildings themselves are gonna, are subject to, to the condominium process, and so they can be sold individually and partitioned and sold individually.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to answer some questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Havel, thank you for joining us tonight. Just to restate the question that I asked of staff regarding the maintenance, typically, as I'm familiar with the residential condominium, that the association, homeowners, property owners association, maintains all the grounds, the streets, the sidewalks, landscaping, and Owners Association, maintains all the grounds, the streets, the sidewalks, landscaping, including the exterior of the structures. And in this case, I noticed that the parcel line is contiguous with the eve drip line, so to speak, as opposed to the wall footprint, and so there's gonna be somewhat of a gap between that eve line and the wall line. So my question is, who maintains the exterior surface, or the exterior walls, or actually the exterior of the buildings, and then that landscaping between the eve drip line and the wall, whether it be gravel or shrubs? Who's the maintenance responsibility for that? Will it continue to be the association through some agreement, or will that now be reverting to the individual condo owners?
That, maintenance of that will be by the association, and that is covered underneath the CCNRs and also the condo plan. That's quite tightly controlled, and so the ownership of the inside of the units, the partitioned ownership inside of it, normally goes to the face of the inside wall. So the building itself will be maintained by the association.
So for all intents and purposes, it would be what we're mostly familiar with, was a residential condominium, and in all the aspects of management and ownership and maintenance, then?
Yes, the CCNRs modify that, but they're all about the same, just little variations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other Commissioner questions of the applicant? All right, Mr. Havel, thank you for now, we may call you back up later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is, we've got two other speaker cards, James Lech and then Debbie Naves. James Lech. And apologies if I've mispronounced your name. Lech, so sorry. Again, we ask that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Good evening.
Hi, good evening, my name is James Lech, I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. I mean, my wife and our families, property backs up to this particular parcel that is being, being asked to be changed. I guess a lot of the questions have been answered as far as a condominium, wasn't really sure whether it was residential or whether it was commercial. I think that's somewhat clear. I guess I have a question, too. This change, will it change any of these zoning requirements? I mean, the purpose is to be able to sell the parcels to multiple parcels? I guess that's, okay. Also, these business condominiums, currently, right now, it's used for medical only, mostly. Correct? Whether that would change, whether this is a precursor for having retail spots there or in the future for residential? I'm not sure if this is a precursor to that, what they're trying to accomplish, so I had that question as well. I would like to speak to them and to ask that question, if that is okay on the record?
Actually, Mr. Lech, procedurally, as a matter of process, you address the Commission.
Okay.
The applicant addresses the Commission, and then the staff will come back and speak about questions raised, both questions and comments made both by the applicant and by public speakers, such as yourself. So I'm sure if you have outstanding questions, staff will make every answer to, every effort to try to respond to them. And then Commissioners may also have some questions for you as well.
Okay, thank you.
But just as a matter of process, there's one speaker and one set of listeners up here, only. We don't, we don't have.
A forum.
Speaker to staff, or speaker to applicant, or other kinds of communication. So I hope that answers who you ask questions of.
Correct. I don't think it's really an issue, being that if they're not gonna change anything, if it's not gonna impact the traffic as well, I think that was a concern with ourselves as well, whether these businesses are sold, and whether it's a more high-traffic-type business, so to speak, than a medical building, which the medical buildings themselves are from basically 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 o'clock, and then it's quiet on the backside of our home. Just a concern because of, at the golf course, they recently put up the venue for events, and that has, as far as being, living on that street, has brought some noise to our neighborhood. So with this new proposal, we thought it was a concern that even adding more noise and traffic would be a problem. So I would like to address that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, first for coming in to address, to raise your concerns, and as I said, I hope that staff and perhaps the applicant will be able to respond to them. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
And our next and final public speaker on this case is Debbie Naves or Naves. Again, I'm sorry, one of those is wrong, but I'm sure you can correct me. And if you could state your name and your city of residence. Good evening.
My name is Debbie Naves. Thank you. And I'm from Ventura. I am a licensed land surveyor also. Our company will be drawing the condominium plan that divides the buildings with the units, and the reason for it is because the owners of those companies, in some cases, have expressed to the property owner that they want to own their own unit. And so this was in reaction to that request, and so that's why it's before you. Some of the buildings have a couple units per building, some of them have as many as four, there's no buildings with more than four in one building. So, and it's just to separate the units, basically. And then if they wanted to buy the whole building, then they could buy the parcel. So that, it was all in reference to a reaction of the owners of the units, that, or the building, the businesses that are in the units now. So, and I don't know, maybe I can answer some of your other questions on the condominium.
Thank you, Ms. Naves, for your comments and for coming in. Are there any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. With that, we will go back to staff for any comments in response to the applicant and to the public speakers.
Yes, I can respond to the question regarding the different uses in the buildings. Clearly, Ms. Naves has stated the intent of the property owners and the reason for their requesting the land division, but similar to what they could do today, there are other types of commercial uses that could be housed in these buildings that are allowed in the C-3 zone. Most of those require either amofication to the existing development permit that would come through the city for approval, or a new development permit, and when they create different parcels, they may need to do new development permits for different types of uses if they requested it, which would be another public hearing and process, or a special use permit. But there is a list of different types of uses that are allowed today, that would also be, continue to be allowed because it's still in the C-3 zone.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Finley, in reference to the subdivision process, there's been reference made that this is the first step and perhaps an additional step where individual tenants may elect to purchase their unit, in which case there'd have to be an additional subdivision. If there's no changes to the walls, no changes to the tenants, and they basically just want to act on that opportunity, would that require an additional public hearing for that subdivision request?
Not, this approval is allowing them to create a condo map, and as Ms. Naves stated, the existing buildings could be divided in, some into two. It's listed on the, on the map itself, it talks about the parceling and lotting, and they could, some of them could have two, and the biggest one, I think, is four units within the building, but it sounds like there are currently multiple users in several of the buildings already.
Okay, so that would just be an administrative process at that point?
It's actually part of this process.
Oh, it is? Okay.
The condo map, I believe, goes to the DRE, the Department of Real Estate, for approval, and that would just continue on from here if they choose to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nichols. Commissioner McMahon.
Hi. In order for there to be some more clarification for the applicant, excuse me, the speaker who has some questions about what could be done in those units, currently, if the tenants moved out and they were re-leased to new tenants, there are several different types of businesses that could move in without any, any approval by the city, and those same different businesses could also be done if it becomes a condo. So what's allowed now would be allowed then, and it's not necessarily the same thing that is in there right this moment. Correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff? Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Finley, just to clarify that, in looking at the report, it indicates that this is a zone for commercial and community shopping center zoning, so shopping, we have a number of shopping centers in the C-3 throughout the city, but this is not really designed as a typical strip mall or shopping center, so even if one tenant might leave and you get another in it, I doubt that there would be too much, the question was traffic, too much more traffic than was already there, because the footprints are set, the square footage is set, and I presume that the allowable parking is set, and you can only do so much. So would there be any dramatic changes that you would foresee, even if there was some change of tenants in that location?
That's a good question. We've thought about that, and it's true, because the buildings are limited to the existing footprint, the parking there is gonna be, you know, reciprocal, they're all, it's shared, and so it's a finite number of spaces, and the typical uses, they have similar parking requirements, and again, they won't be able to expand those. This property already has a approved parking reduction on the side of 8% from one modification that took place in the 90s, so it's not likely that any more intense use would be allowed to move in that requires additional parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions of staff? All right, then, we'll go back to our applicant, Mr. Havel, if you wish, you may have up to five minutes for rebuttal or additional comments in response to what staff and public speakers have said.
Jerry Havel, I have no additional comments, I believe, and if the Commission is satisfied with the answers that they heard, then I don't think I have anything to add. If you need some additional comments from me, I'd be more than happy to provide. Other than that, I believe that everything was handled. I didn't have any questions with my notes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Havel. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, not hearing any additional questions, I'll close the public meeting on this case and open the floor for motions and/or discussion. Don't be shy. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that property owners should have a right to do with their property what they want, and this follows that line. I'm concerned, though, with regard to creating not only this process, but again, looking at future process in terms of people trying to divvy up their properties in tiny little pieces. But with that said, this is, I think, one of the perfect situations in which we have no additional construction, no trees are being modified, no buildings are being modified. It's actually a situation which, if we look at a lot of the other commercial condominium processes, I live in Newbury Park, and there's one right off of Wendy, it kind of fits that same guideline, so I don't have a problem with that, and I would actually move to approve LD 2017-70069 with the conditions pointed out by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion? Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly support the motion. You know, this is certainly one of our prime locations in town, it's just a wonderful setting there, park-like, with the oak trees and the office buildings. I think it would be hard to do anything more than what's on site because of the oak trees, it would be hard to build anything beyond that, so I think it does kind of cement, so to speak, what's there that will remain there, and now we're gonna preserve the rest of that as somewhat of a private open space with the homeowners, or Property Owners Association. So I think it's actually an excellent opportunity to preserve that type of an area, so I'm certainly supportive of that, and hopefully this will work well for the tenants as well as for the community.
Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, am happy to support the motion, really to, in reiterating what both my previous Commissioners have said, the property is a very unique property with its landscaping and its oak trees and its components there, and although it does have a wide zoning that could go in there, there's a very clear limitation in the parking, and I think just also the practicality of the location, I think, would prevent, you know, other businesses from considering trying to move in there. Commissioner Nichols very much reiterated, there's not a whole lot you can do with a property like that, and especially with the limitations now a condo association would give it, where you can't do vast expansions and changing the colors and, because of the CCNRs. So with that, I'm happy to support the motion.
Commissioner McMahon.
I, too, will support the motion. I agree with everything that our Commissioner has said already. In addition, Commissioner Lanson has talked about the property owner rights, but it's also the rights of the small business owner to own the unit that they keep their business in, and so I think that's awesome, that we can do that and not have an additional impact in the surrounding area.
Thank you, Commissioners. Are there any other comments?
Motion passed, 5-0.
This case is subject to appeal. Any aggrieved party has 10 days to appeal to the Community Development Department. Before we move on, I want to thank Mr. Havel and staff for your presentation tonight. Thank you, and I'm glad that this part of Thousand Oaks will continue to prosper. Thank you. All right, moving on to Case 6B. Will the clerk please call Case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding Case OTP 2016-70576, LTP 2016-70608, and LPC 2017-70061. Applicant Larry Court, HOA. Request to change an approved landscaping plan, remove 15 planted Coast Live oak, pruning of four Coast Live oak, and two California Sycamore trees, all within an existing town home development. Location 1010 to 1084 Larry Court and 1012 to 1180 Pan Court.
Thank you. With our staff presentation this evening, we will be hearing from, let's see, sorry, Mr. Steve Kearns. Good evening, Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Chair Newman, and good evening Planning Commission, members in the audience. As mentioned before, this item involves three related applications: an oak tree permit, landmark tree permit, and a landscape plan check application, all pertaining to landscape modifications for an existing town home development located on Larry Court and Pan Courts in the Newbury Park area of Thousand Oaks. Shown here is an aerial perspective of the subject development site. The red line is the extent of the town home development. There's actually two developments in this area. There's 13 units along Larry Court, another 27 units down on Pan Court. To the south of the development is Lynn Road, it's about 500 feet south. Hague Road is to the east. To the west is Ventu Villa Mobile Home Park. Further to the west, off-screen, is Ventu Park Road. The project site is served off of Santee Street, which feeds into Larry Court in the northerly part and Pan Court in the south. The northerly development was approved for the 13 units in 1995. The southerly part, for 27 units, in 1996. Both of these developments have their own independent landscape plan approved, but both were certified and approved in 1998. The entire area, though, is governed by a single homeowner association. Shown here is a plan of the entire site. The northerly part, again, is the 13 units, and down below, the 27 units. The colored circles and the hexagons are the areas being affected by this plan, at least for the trees. The request involves the removal of a total, or accounting for the removal, a total of 15 oak trees. The yellow circles are trees that exist. There's 14 of those, and those are proposed to be removed on the basis that they are causing or likely will cause damage. The red circle is a tree that has already been removed but has been accounted for in this application. The blue hexagons are trees that exist. There are two crepe myrtles and one purple leaf plum. These trees are intended to remain and be made part of the landscape plan should this project be approved. Shown in this image is one of the oak trees, one of the largest specimens out in the development area. As you can see, it's within a plant area that's about 2 and 1/2 feet in interior dimension. The canopy is growing up into the development, the houses behind it. This 2 is another one of the largest specimens, canopy growing into the houses. And this here is the largest of the trees being requested for removal. It's about 14 inches in diameter. It is growing into the houses as well as nearing the extent of the planter confines. I shall show you in this next image. This is the trunk of that tree. It's nearing the left edge of the planter. As you can see in the background, in this general area, there's been some grinding work to eliminate a tripping hazard caused by the uplift by the tree's trunk system. And there's some cracking and some fissures on each side of the plant area. In a lot of cases throughout this development, these areas on each side of the plant area have been removed and replaced due to damage caused by trees. This is an image of an oak tree that has been removed, and it was removed because it was causing damage. This driveway, a good portion of it, it's harder to see in this image, but a good portion of the driveway in this area has been removed and replaced due to damage caused by the Staff supports the request of removals since the trees are causing and will likely continue to cause damage. And this is a Thousand Oaks municipal code finding for approving an oak tree permit, which was adopted by City Council in 2015 in response to a very similar issue out at Braemar Gardens Town Home Development out off Landero Road in the North Branch area. They were near very narrow planters, about the same width, and the trees were growing to the extent of the planters causing damage. City Council listened to this group and adopted a standard for approving oak tree permits based on whether or not the trees are causing or even likely to cause property damage. So in this case, we are relying on this condition as a basis for approving or recommending approval of the oak tree permit. If that finding did not exist, there'd be a different review process, as was before that finding was adopted by City Council. Also, these oak trees were never intended to be part of the, that these planters, the plant areas that now have oak trees were actually approved originally for crepe myrtles. So sometime between the approval and today, these oak trees were planted. The proposed replacement trees, which are crepe myrtles and strawberry trees, are consistent with the original attendance, they're both smaller specimens and will do well in these smaller plant areas. Additionally, the site will receive 15 mitigation oak trees for the removals, which results in additional 15 oak trees, augmenting the existing oak trees on the site. Additionally, the removal and replacement will occur in one phase, creating a consistent landscape theme. However, it has come to staff's attention that the homeowners association may do this in more than one phase over a period of time. And if that is the case, in any event, staff is recommending that a condition be added, stating that should the tree removal and replacement occur in more than one phase, that the applicant should coordinate the phasing with the Community Development Department prior to beginning the work. This is in order to ensure we can monitor the work and make sure the mitigation, the The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 4 exemption, which involves minor alterations of vegetation. As a matter of record, staff did receive one email stating their opposition to the application from a Mr. Fox. The opposition stated they do not approve the request, but there was no further basis for the opposition. Staff therefore recommends that the Planning Commission approve the three applications before you, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available for questions.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Commissioners, are there questions of staff? Commissioner McMahon?
Yes. Can you tell me where on the property these new, the 15 new trees will be planted?
There are nine of them, which are proposed near the entrance. As you visit the site and go up Santee Street, there's common area on both sides of Santee Street. There's an oak tree mitigation map. I don't know if you have a copy of that in front of you. It's made part of the packet. The 16 of those oak trees, there's 19 shown on that mitigation tree location, shown on that oak tree mitigation map. Only 15 oak tree mitigation trees are required. The applicant was demonstrating that there is sufficient room for up to 19 trees. 16 of them will augment existing oak roofs on the property. There was nearly 100 oak trees planted as part of the development. So they'd be at various areas along the common area around the perimeter of the development.
Thank you. I did get this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Kearns, for the report and for the presentation. Do have a couple of questions. Is there any requirement for stump grinding? As I noticed in the photo there, there was a residual stump. Is that a requirement for this removal process?
In some oak tree permits, we will require that the stump is ground down below the surface. That's to prevent any sort of tripping hazard. That's not a requirement in this case. The trees are not going to be planted in the same general area. Right now, the oak trees are planted in the center of the planter, the finger planter. We would like those trees to be moved towards the end of the finger, closer to the street, in order to prevent the canopy from growing into the home, give it more room to grow. So it shouldn't be affected by the root system, but they may have to grind some of the roots that are in the area.
Okay. Thank you. And the report indicates that the planters are varying in width, somewhere between 2 and 1/2 feet and 3 feet. Is that adequate width for any tree to be planted and thrive?
Well, it is very narrow. It's a smaller planter, but based on the applicant's consultant's recommendation and our view, we believe that the species suggested for these planters will do well there. It is adequate room for the type of tree that's being proposed.
Okay. And I know these trees are occasionally planted as street trees. Is that correct?
The crepe myrtle is, yes, both are.
And is there some minimum tree well size that is required for these types of trees? Is 3x3 tree well, would that be considered adequate for a tree like this?
I know 3x3s are used for trees like this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there other questions of staff? I have just one question, quick clarification. The report mentions typically in replacement cases that 24 or 36-inch box replacements are used in the case of oak trees. And what's suggested here is a different unit of measurement, is 15 gallons. Can you help clarify the size relationship between a 15-gallon replacement and a 24- or 36-inch replacement?
Actually, that's an excellent point. Generally, for removal of live trees, the oak tree guidelines suggest that the trees are replaced at a 3:1 ratio, which is 2 24-inch box trees and 1 36-inch box trees. The guidelines further go on to explain, or require a certain application type for certain actions. For dead or hazardous oak trees, they require a Type A permit. That permit goes on to apply to trees that are causing or likely to cause damage. So they're categorized the same. Because these trees are causing damage, and the trees were never intended for these plant areas, staff is recommending that the dead or hazardous requirement apply to this application as well.
Mr. Gilli?
Yeah, I think you were also asking, just size-wise, how large they would be. So the 15-gallon is, I wouldn't say half the size of 24-inch box, but it's smaller than a 24-inch box.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, both comments help put into perspective what we're dealing with, these two different units of measurement, which is really what I was looking for. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions of staff? All right, then, let's go to the applicant. Speaking, there are a number of speakers for the Larry Court HOA. Let me make sure I include them all here. We have Ms. Sherri Liken, HOA president, Jerry Weinstein, HOA Board Vice President, a couple of residents, Kent Corral, Peter Herrera, and Mr. Richard Campbell, as the applicant's landscape architect. I think that's it for the HOA's representatives. Between you, you'll have 15 minutes, which you can divide up any which way you like to make your presentation. Before you begin, I need to disclose that two of the speakers, Sherri Liken and Kent Corral, are good personal friends of mine. Both, one is current and one is past president of another organization, the Conejo Valley Cyclists, of which I am a member. And these are good friends in the cycling community. They're friends of mine. I don't think that has any impact on my impartiality in hearing this case tonight, but for the record, these are people I've known for a long time. So with that, Ms. Liken, if you would, please, begin by coming to the podium and stating your name and city of residence. Good evening.
How's that? Okay. I'm Sherri Liken, and I live in Larry Court, HOA. I'm representing the association, and just want to thank Mr. Kearns for having such a deep report on all that we have going on there with the trees. They have caused substantial damage over the years that I've been there, six years. I've been on the board about five years. Two driveways, two homes, and there's evidence of more damage being created all the time. We did have some pictures that have gone through with the roots affecting the pipes, mainly in the front yards. And though we love trees, we love the open space, we love having the shade, the trees are definitely taking over the association and causing a tremendous amount of money. We are a small association, less than 40 homes. And any questions, then? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think in looking at the materials, the indication was that originally crepe myrtles were supposed to be planted as part of the original plan, but that didn't happen. Is there any idea why that didn't happen, just out of curiosity? Mystery. All right. That's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know, I believe Commissioner Nichols asked the question about stumps and grinding the stumps at the particular spots in between the properties. I just want to get a sense from you. Are you planning on, even though it's not necessarily a condition, as to this application tonight, are you planning on grinding them down as a safety issue, or?
Maybe, Chair, if we can have the applicant come back to the mic?
Yeah, if you could, please.
Just so we have a record. It's important that you speak into the microphone, so...
Yeah, you're on TV.
The recording can hear you.
I don't want to be on TV. But yes, to answer the question, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, in addition to the speakers I named for the applicant, Ms. Liken, Mr. Corral, Jerry Weinstein, Peter Herrera, Richard Campbell, I've got some other public speaker cards and one written comment card that I'll pass around from Ms. Kristy Warwick. The other public speaker card is from Colleen Mulford. And is Ms. Mulford here? Ah, okay. She's not with us. I will pass the written statement for review by the other commissioners. And before we go back to staff, ask again if there are any other questions of the applicant. Okay. We'll take just a minute to review the written statement, and then we'll go back to staff. back to staff. Okay, we'll go back to staff at this time. Mr. Kearns, any additional comments or questions?
Staff has no additional comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff to follow up? I have a process question. It's tangentially related to this case, but it's triggered by this case, which is, going forward, are there additional steps that could be taken to avoid a repeat of this incident, where what happened here is that essentially the wrong kind of tree was planted. An approval was issued for one kind of tree, and at some point, unknown to the city, a different kind of tree was put in that led to the problems that necessitated this application tonight. Is this something for code compliance, or is this something for CDD? Are there any additional steps that could be taken to avoid a repeat of this?
We are going to look into the situation and continue to research and discuss with the association exactly how this particular case came about, and we may end up preparing a document that is provided to a new HOA that is created that notes what changes that they might do to their property that would have to go by the city. So, it is being looked at.
Yes, I think that would be very helpful, especially as new HOAs stand up. I know we have similar review processes in place with transplants, for example, where there are one-year, two-year, or five-year reviews that are required. And if there's something here, or where an HOA does something, it's not just immediately that happens, it's through some review process over time. Okay, are there any other questions of staff or of the applicant? All right. As a matter of process, we go back to the applicant at this point. If you wish, you have five minutes for rebuttal or additional comments about anything you've heard. You can use that five minutes, or not use it, it's up to you. If you do wish to speak, please again come up to the podium and state your name and city of residence.
One thing I'd like to say is that we would like to take care of this as soon as possible because the trees are damaging so many properties currently, that we don't want to put this off because of the financial problem that it's causing.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this case and open the floor for discussion or a motion. Commissioners. Commissioner McMahon.
I think this is a very reasonable request by the association, and it rectifies a wrong that was done a long time ago. So, I'm going to actually move that the Planning Commission approve the special use permit 2017-70183, based on the findings and subject to the conditions that staff has. Go forward.
Just make sure I got the right, you're moving forward the OTP 2016-70576.
Ooh, I went to the wrong one, didn't I? Oh, shoot. Okay, let me restate that. Okay, I'm trying to manage my two devices here.
Understood.
All right, the 2017-70061, have we got the right one there? Yes, okay. Subject to the conditions set forth by the city. All right, there we go.
So, just for the record, I think I understand Commissioner McMahon's motion, but it is to approve OTP 2016-70576, LTP 2016-70608, LPC 2017-70061.
Yes, that's correct. I'm sorry, I had the wrong thing on my iPad. Oh, okay.
Understood, I got the same thing, that's why I caught it.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think we're all on the same page with regard to the motion before us. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I notice that the purpose that this is before, or the main issue that this is before the Planning Commission is because it's an oak tree removal. And certainly, we have a passion for our oak trees, and we want to make sure that we keep those in mind. And we don't want to let something slip by that we ordinarily would want to have some additional attention paid to it, so appreciate staff bringing this to us. But I would concur and certainly support the motion that this is probably something that somebody had a real strong passion for oak trees and figured, hey, if a little is good, a lot is better, and just start plugging them in wherever they can fit. But you end up with the wrong tree in the wrong place, and things happen, consequences that result of that. But also, I found that these are planted trees, they're not native trees, so I certainly give them a little leeway. The trees are damaging things, and it's like, okay, we can rectify that. They were never intended to be there, okay, a lot of good reasons for this. And on top of that, they're replacing them with suitable trees for the area, and they're planting more trees in the open space around it. So, I think we're getting a good deal with this. Obviously, the homeowners are taking good care of their property, certainly appreciate that, respecting the ordinance that we have, as painful as that might be in some respects, certainly appreciate that. So, I will certainly support the motion and hope this works out in the best, and that place will look as beautiful as you hope it will.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too echo what my previous two commissioners have said about the pending motion, but I just want to also take a second to thank you for putting together a very well list of clear evidence that shows these oak trees are a problem and they are damaging your property. It makes our job a lot easier when we can look at the municipal code, see that problematic trees have a basis to be removed, mitigation measures and planting the other trees are in place, and then you make our job very easy when you list all these issues that you're having because of the trees. So, I want to thank you for putting that together, as well as coming out in a very large group tonight. But I'm happy to support the motion for many of the same reasons, and I'll just keep it short and echo what my previous commissioners have said. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In my day job, I deal with a lot of issues where we try to, at some point, look and say, should you rescind an entire transaction because the parties were mistaken, or there was some problem associated with that? I look at this as basically rescinding the entire process and putting all of you back to where you should have been from day one with the exact trees that you were supposed to get. Even though we value the oak trees, and obviously we want to end up preserving those, I think the HOA deserved to have the trees from the beginning that they were supposed to have. The trees will actually be very beautiful. I drove up and down the streets of a beautiful neighborhood, very nice mature trees in some areas. These new trees will actually contribute to that overall process. So, I think unfortunately, I just wish you guys had done this sooner, so you didn't have to go through the agony. Some of these trees, I know, are growing exceptionally into a lot of the buildings, so I support the motion as well.
Thank you. I think this is a case study in unintended consequences, where, as Commissioner Nichols pointed out, someone liked oak trees, said, this is Thousand Oaks, let's put in oak trees. Coast live oaks get really big really fast. They're beautiful trees, and that's one of their best attributes. Everyone here, everyone on the applicant's team, city staff, as the applicant said, we love trees, we love open space, we love the shade that oak trees provide. None of those are at issue tonight. One of the worst things we can do, given that we love all those things, one of the worst things we can do is take a giant coast live oak and try to shoehorn it into these spaces that are obviously too small and not appropriate for them. So, I will join my fellow commissioners in supporting this motion. Thank you. And if the clerk will prepare us for a vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. This motion is subject to appeal, and the agreed party has 10 days to file an appeal with the Community Development Department. And my thanks to the applicant for bringing this case to us tonight. Thank you. Will the clerk please call case 6C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6C regarding case SUP 2017-70183. Applicant: Conejo Valley Auto Center. Request to allow pre-owned vehicle sales and repair shop at an existing industrial building. Location: 2561 Teller Road. Recommendation: approved with conditions.
Thank you. With our staff presentation this evening is Mr. Will Chua. Good evening, Mr. Chua.
Good evening, Chair Newman, members of the commission. As mentioned, for your consideration tonight is a special use permit request to allow automotive sale and repair at an existing industrial building, which is showing the screen right now, and inset in red. The project site is located within the Rancho Conejo Industrial Park, specific Plan 15, and it is currently zoned M1, meaning light manufacturing. The building has 12,012 square feet of leased space. It was originally approved with 26 parking spaces. The applicant has mentioned is proposing a car dealership with repair facilities, where he looks for a particular vehicle that a customer would want to get, repairs, recondition it, before selling it to the customer. As you can see from the aerial, this area is a mix of commercial and industrial uses. The target store is to the west. There's other retail sales on the south side of the property across Teller Road, and a BMW motorcycle sales and repair facility is to the east, across the street from Tourmalin Drive. This is a picture of the front of the property. And this one shows the rear side of the property. This is the proposed floor area for the project. Based on the proposed floor area, there will be 25 parking spaces required. The green area is where the office areas and display area would be located. These are parked at 1 per 250. The blue areas are the service facilities, which are parked at 1 per 250, and the rest, the balance of the space, would be dedicated to a vehicle display, which is parked at 1 per 1,000. The accessible parking, there's a requirement for the applicant to provide an accessible ADA parking, basically, which is right here, which will remove one parking space. So, there will be a total parking spaces required, which still meets the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code Parking Code. The facility will be operating from 8:00 AM till 5:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requires approval of special use permit for automobile sales and leasing. The specific Plan 15 allows for additional uses, which includes automotive repair, which is not currently allowed under the M1 zone. The project, as I mentioned earlier, is located within an industrial area. During the notification period, staff received a letter of concern expressing concern regarding vehicle access and outdoor repair activities. The applicant has agreed to conditions that were included by staff that prohibits outdoor storage and vehicle repair, which addresses this concern. These conditions are condition numbers eight through 11, listed in the staff report. This is a minor change in use, allowed under the specific Plan 15, and also requires, which also requires minor alteration of a building which qualifies for a Class 1 exemption under CEQA. And staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve SUP 2017-70183, based on the listed findings and subject to the attached conditions in the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and staff is ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Misses, are there any questions of staff? All right then, we'll go straight to our applicant, Mr. James Marco. We ask that you state your name and city of residence, and you have 15 minutes. Thank you.
I'm James Marco, city of Thousand Oaks, my residence. I'd like to thank the commission, Mr. Chua, for his work with me on this, and my support staff here. So, I am currently the owner of Westlake Auto Collision, and we're a veteran and family-owned operation. We started the business in 2009. It is a collision repair facility. We started in, again, 2009, I had five employees. We've since grown that to 16 employees, four of which are my family members. So, this opportunity of this car dealership came about, because we occasionally will, in our body shop business, will occasionally come across a car we can actually repair, refurbish, and then sell. So, my idea was to now turn that around and find cars that people request certain types of vehicles. We will go locate that vehicle and recondition it for them, and then sell it to them, and then we'll be able to service it for them as well, just like other dealerships. We plan on participating in any kind of a school program, such as a ROP student for training, to get some young individuals into the industry, which includes car service and sales. We've participated in those type of programs in our current business, and they tend to be successful because we're getting younger people and training them in our industry. So, my recommendation, or my request, is to approve the special use permit 2017-70183. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Commissioners, are there questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure I have an understanding, where are the 25 parking spaces that you are going to incorporate? Where are they going to be located? Is it all in the front, or is it actually in the building?
It's divided amongst the two. There's seven in the front, and the rest are in the back of the building.
All right, so you're not looking to incorporate any parking spaces in front of a different property?
No, this will all be contained within the property.
All right, so seven in front and how many in the back? The rest, I'm assuming?
There's 18.
Okay. And you're looking to do body repair, service repair, is there any things?
Our primary is the, you know, car sales, but we'll be able to service that car, maintenance, we'll be able to fix any type of a fender, bender, or scratches that you might have, or do even a color change for somebody. So, if someone's looking for a car of a particular color, we can find one and then paint it the color they like.
For doing servicing inside the building, which I know is one of the concerns, is there any modifications you need to make to the building?
We'll be adding a spray booth, which I've been looking into, which has been pre-approved by fire department already. That tenant improvement has triggered my ADA compliance, which is with the ramp outside and a bathroom. And we're currently working on the plans with architect in the city now and planning.
That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sounds like a great concept, I hope it works for you. I've got a couple of questions for you, though. Is your intent to do this on a pre-order basis only, or some spec where you see, like you said, hey, I think I can make something out of this? Is this going to be a combination?
It will be a combination, yes. There are some cars that I've seen, like older cars, and the... like older cars in the 40s, that we would take, refurbish, and those would be some of the cars on display. But mostly it would be on request. We will have stock and an inventory, but it'll be more of a personal, come find, you know, come look what, come and ask me what you're looking for, and we'll find it.
Okay, because I don't suppose you can have just a plethora of vehicles awaiting inside that building without having some room to work?
No, there'll be a couple, but mainly it's going to be like a special order.
Okay. And is this going to be more like stock? Are you looking at more modified vehicles where you're trying to?
More stock. We're trying to stick to like a stock condition, like some of these older vehicles, put them back to their original state.
Okay. And with the clientele that you suspect is around here, is this something that's kind of picking up a little bit? Or just from the basis of your, because I'm just curious as to why you think this could be a successful business? Obviously, you're in the auto business, so you have some inkling.
Right. Well, we get requests all the time for that, you know, $4,000, $5,000 vehicle for the high school student type thing. So that will be one of our specialties as well, is finding that first car. So those cars will be available. We'll have a variety, but for the most part, again, it'll be like a special request.
Okay. And then more on an operational perspective. I know that there's a condition in the packet here that no auto repair on the exterior. So that rear parking area would be just specifically for parking. So I presume you may park a vehicle there that you intend to work on, but actually no active repairs. But is that still going to work with your business model, where you can perform all the activities that you need, and there will be no auto repair activity out in the rear parking lot?
That's correct, yeah. Inside this building is fairly large. I'm currently working out of about 7,000 square feet, and this is 12,000 square feet. So there allows for a lot more room to have the cars inside.
Okay, and so with any of the conditions, you don't see any problems with being able to complete what you?
That's correct, yeah. I've agreed to all these conditions.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to largely ask on the the conditions involving the outdoor and indoor storage of the cars. But looking at your plans, just so I better understand them, the vehicle display stalls are going to be the locations where cars to be worked on, cars that are finished, stuff that you're just not currently working on in your bays? That's where everything's going to be stored?
Correct.
Okay. And you spoke to Commissioner Nichols' point that you are fine with the conditions, so I have nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon.
Thank you. I have a quick question about the parking. Do you see this as a lot of customer traffic, the 25 parking spaces? Would you say that most of them will be customers, or most of them will be cars that you're going to work on, or cars that you've finished working on?
I would say that, of course, in the beginning, most of the places will be vacant, unfortunately. But as we progress, there'll be for the customers cars. It'll be a combination of both, perhaps the customer coming to pick up their car that, you know, they ordered or reconditioned. Those spaces will be utilized for those vehicles as well.
So it's not like a heavy foot traffic type with lots and lots of people?
It's going to be very low-key. You probably wouldn't even know what's going on inside until you came inside.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one follow-up. By virtue of having parking spaces in the back, are you going to have any signage indicating that people are supposed to drive around at the back? And if so, where is that supposed to go?
Well, there is access in the front, so our primary reception area will be in the front. If there's additional parking required, we'll instruct them people. Good question. I haven't thought about directing them around to the back, but I believe in the beginning, and at least I'll be able to get through that and have adequate parking in the front for my customers.
Thank you.
And then I've just got one question on interpretation of the outdoor storage condition. It's a pretty simple condition. It says, "Outdoor storage, repair, and vehicle display are prohibited." Is it my interpretation of that, or well, is it your interpretation of that, that that would prohibit parts storage outdoors? So for example, if you had a bunch of older cars, and you ordered, let's say, a half dozen exhaust systems for them, and truck offloads those, is your understanding of this condition that storage of the exhaust systems outdoors would not be allowed?
Yes, that is my interpretation. And there are rooms within the building that have adequate storage for our parts that we'd be utilizing.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Nichols.
With that in mind, I notice there's a storage pod on site. Is that yours, or will you continue to utilize something like that?
That is mine, and that will probably be used for some of that storage, but it's locked and contained.
Okay. And that's acceptable by staff to be able to store something like that?
Would.
We can check with them.
Yeah. If not, there's alternatives for the storage of anything else that would need to put in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have one other public speaker card for this case. That's Hinden Harris. And if you would, please, when you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Hinden Harris, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1992. So I've lived here a few years. I'm here as a friend and as a customer of Jim Marco. He's been in the automotive business for a number of years, and he has a very thriving clientele, because he's a good businessman, and he's very good at what he does. Jokingly, I said to the people behind me that were a part of his support team that his places, his bays, are so clean that you could go in there for surgery. And one of them said, "Well, I wouldn't go in there for surgery." I said, "That was just a humorous analogy of how clean his facilities are." But I hope that you get the opportunity to go by and see some of the businesses that he's currently operating, and you know that it will be a success. And cleanliness is not only important to him, but his entire staff. It's one of their trademarks. It's very, very important to him. Some people have an image of the automotive business, or, you know, auto repair, where, you know, the mechanics are walking around with grease on their hands. This is not the case at all at his facility. I know Jim not only as a friend, but I'm one of his customers, loyal customers. And I strongly recommend him to all the friends and family to use his facilities. Cleanliness and public perception of how his business looks from the outside is very, very important. So you won't see mufflers stacked outside or anything like that. How he looks and how he runs his business and the cleanliness of it and the efficiency of it is very, very important. I support this, not only because I'm a friend and I've seen how his business operates, but it'll bring additional sales tax revenue to the City of Thousand Oaks and also increase employment, as he hires people to assist him in this new business endeavor that he's opening up. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go back to staff now for any additional comments. Mr. Chua.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is pretty much addressing Commissioner Nichols' question regarding the pod. The pod is normally allowed there if it will not interfere with the backup areas for the parking spaces to the back. So if, in my final inspection of the property, I find that they don't have, the parking spaces at the back do not have enough backup space, then it will have to be removed. I hope that answers your question.
Commissioner Pletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up. Mr. Chua, always good to have your presentations. Thank you. With condition number eight in the outdoor storage, I'm just, general question, your interpretation of this, could he put completed cars that are ready to be picked up outside?
No. As far as staff is concerned, the intent is no vehicles to be used, to be stored outdoor. Reasoning behind is because the property do not have any outdoor space aside from, and the back area is totally dedicated to parking spaces. So if they use that, technically you don't use parking spaces as storage of vehicle or any sort. So that is just to prevent using the allocated, the required parking space for storage.
Does the, I guess, for example, the BMW facility across the street, do they have similar conditions as far as their parking, storage of motorcycles?
I believe they do have a similar condition.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions of staff? We'll go back to the applicant now. If you wish, you have a five-minute period for rebuttal, additional comments.
Yes, I would just like to, again, thank the Commission, thank Mr. Chua for his assistance in this, and thank you for all the support that I have. The BMW dealer does have the same conditions. I've been studying the area quite a bit lately. And that's about it. I just wanted to thank you all for your time, and I respectfully request that you approve this project. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Are there any questions of the applicant? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the floor for a motion or discussion. Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really like your business demeanor. You seem like you actually know what you're doing. You actually have a very nice customer saying some nice things about you. And I think it sounds like you have a good team behind you as well. I've driven around the area and seen that it's a somewhat eclectic area. There's actually sale of engine parts and marine parts and cosmetics and lots of different things. There's no houses nearby, so we're not worrying about that. And we've expanded the scope of what uses we've kind of gone through. There's an M2 racing track nearby and lots of different things. So I think that, given all of the conditions that the staff has pointed out, this is probably going to be a use that makes sense. I am concerned about the parking. It's going to be incumbent upon you to actually really abide by that. The concern that the neighbor had that was addressed in the notes, I know you'll take seriously and try to do your best with regard to that. And with that, I would move that we make a motion to approve, with the conditions cited by staff, SUP 2017-70183. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am happy to support the motion. It's always good to see local businesses expanding into new areas and just reaching out across the community to do great things that I certainly couldn't do. Ask me to change my oil, and it's going to take me a long, long time. No, but that being said, I want to applaud you for being very open and willing to work with not only city staff, but also the neighbors in raising their concerns. As a passing comment, it was a, seemed strange to me, some of the conditions that are placed in there, but you seem to be willing to step up and operate your business and make do with the large space that you have. And I think that that shows the type of applicant you are, so I want to thank you for that. And I believe it does, as Commissioner Lanson said, it fits the area in which, it is a very eclectic area, to use his phrasing. So with that, I'm very happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure if anybody on the current commission was here, but we did have a similar request some time ago, but it wasn't quite to this extent. It was more of a, almost like a brokerage. They go out and select the car and provide it. Do you remember that one, Mr. Newman? Yeah, Commissioner?
I do. I believe it was in September 2014.
Okay, yeah, it was a couple of years ago. I don't believe they were proposing any repairs. I think maybe some, you know, maybe just some polishing and cleanup. But the reason I mention that is I just continue to see this area as a transition. You know, we've seen some very unique applications of what a warehouse is being used for. And with new businesses, new entrepreneurs, new ideas, we'll continue to reinvigorate that part of the community. Obviously, Amgen has a stakeholder and a large part of that section of Newbury Park. But I'm just very interested to see how these new businesses come up, you know? It's just, it's an idea. It's an idea. It's a passion. And I wish you all the best for the success on that and look forward to many years of productive auto repair and maintenance there. So thank you for coming.
Commissioners, are there any other comments? Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote? Please vote.
Motion passed 5-0.
This motion is subject to appeal. Any aggrieved party has 10 days to file an appeal with the Community Development Department. And I want to add my thanks to Mr. Marco and team for continuing to do business in Thousand Oaks and wish you well in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We move now to item 7, Community Development Department reports and referrals.
Yes, looking forward to our next hearing date on August 28th. We currently don't have any public hearing items, so there's the likelihood that the meeting will be canceled, but that won't be known for certain for a few more weeks. So we will inform the Commission in early August if that meeting is actually going to occur.
All right, thank you. The next item is the minutes and resolution of the Commission's June 12th meeting. Is there a motion on those minutes and resolutions? Commissioner Pletcher.
I swear, I keep pushing these buttons.
We're all new to this system. I keep not noticing there are speakers pending, so.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve both the minutes and the resolutions from our previous meeting dated June 12th, 2017.
Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
Motion passed 4-0 with one abstention. Chair Newman.
Who was absent from that meeting. Thank you. We move now to AB 1234 reports. Do we have any AB 1234 reports? Not hearing any Commission comments. Will we move on to Commission comments? Commissioner Lanson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two things. I just wanted to point out, I will not be here for the October 23rd meeting in the event there's an issue that happens. I'm going to be traveling for that meeting date. And then second of all, I think for those out there and for the Commission, there was an article about SB 649 in the paper with regard to the telecommunication wireless cell tower process going through the assembly. It's now being heard by the Senate and almost on a railroad process that would take all of our local control away, as we heard a number of months ago. So for anybody listening out there, please contact your congressperson. Contact anybody you can if you actually are concerned about losing local control with regard to the placement of these cell towers, because it's a real issue that actually might end up happening in a blink of an eye before we actually know it. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for keeping that front and center before the Commission. Commissioner Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a couple of comments. I did have a couple of comments. First, I forgot to add one more item to my oak tree issue, that we had no opposition to the removal of 15 oak trees, which was miraculous. But also, as I was thinking about what Mr. Kidway was talking about with the Rancho Road photo where he was showing it being weed-infested, after he sat down, I got to thinking about that. I thought, you know, what to some might be a weed infestation to others would be the site of a natural environment that should be preserved just the way it looks. And I've thought about that as we have seen our interchanges basically remain as native grasses and oak trees. To me, that's just a reflection of our community. I mean, that's kind of what we have in our community. I think a lot of people see that as, that's just the way our community is. We like our natural environment and it doesn't have to be fully landscaped and irrigated and with rock and everything else. I could be mistaken, but I don't see a lot of people really getting all upset about that. It certainly wasn't one of the items on the community survey report as things to come up. But I think it just shows a perspective, what maybe the eye, the beauties in the eye of the beholder of what somebody considers a weed infestation. You know, certainly some people might think it'd be nice to have it for beautification purposes, but again, to me, it's just a reflection of our community. And, you know, I'm not opposed to landscaping if people want to, but I'm not gonna make any concerns about it. It just seems to be fine the way that is to me.
Thank you. And on that note, I want to follow up about the community attitude survey. I did not see this referenced in the previous meeting minutes, which I had missed, but prior to the previous meeting, the city had released the results of that community attitude survey. There was an article in the Thousand Oaks Acorn about that, and I thought it was very interesting. I thought all the responses were very interesting, and I encourage everyone in the city to read that and every survey. It's very instructive to see not only the responses to any individual question or even any survey in one given year, but to see how those attitudes hold up over time. And the responses this year are not really all that different from previous years. The top response in the community attitude survey, when people were asked what changes to improve Thousand Oaks can be made, the number one response by far was to reduce traffic congestion. This is, this is a community where people want to be in an uncongested place and want to, perhaps going along with that, see interchanges, landscapes in their, I don't want to say natural state, but, but undisturbed state perhaps. The next response after that, the next two responses are tied. One was, citizens are not sure, they can't think of anything. Tied with that was to limit growth and to preserve open spaces. So of the top three responses, two of them are, don't, don't have more traffic congestion and limit growth and preserve open space, which, which I've heard over and over anecdotally, but in my field involves numbers a lot, and there's a saying, anecdotes are not data. This is data. This is, this is a survey that was compiled using a statistically defensible methodology and it puts numbers to what I'm sure many of us hear over and over again, which is that people live in Thousand Oaks because it's not a congested city. And people want to reduce congestion, not increase it, want to limit growth, want to preserve open space. At the same time, I should note that the number four response was to engage in economic development, which is something else that we as a commissioner charge for doing. That was the number four response. And the number five response was that no changes are needed, everything is fine, and I think the sentiment behind that, which is something I strongly agree with, is that we're, we're very lucky to live here. So there's certainly, of those five top responses, there's certainly a wish for economic development in the city, but there's also a wish for preserving open space, limiting congestion, and we don't, while we don't set the policy here, we do interpret it, and I think we need to be mindful of all these responses as we consider all the cases before us. Anyway, I think the survey is very, very interesting reading, and, and the article, I thought, covered that quite well. I just didn't, wanted to note that before, before we moved on. Are there any other commission comments? All right, we are adjourned, possibly until August 28th, possibly not. Good night, Thousand Oaks. Have a great summer.